Liberty, justice for all. We have a police man standing for all the Ukrainian refugees and all refugees that live throughout the world. Please be seated. Can I roll call, please? Trustee Soberman?
Here.
Trustee Hagan?
Here.
Trustee Albert?
Present.
Trustee Corrigan?
Present.
And Mayor Curley. Upcoming meetings, we have a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, April 4, 2022 at 7:00 PM. We have a workshop meeting scheduled for Monday, April 25, 2022 at 7:00 PM. And a regular meeting scheduled for Monday, May 2, 2022 at 7:00 PM. I'd like to, at this point, I'd like to make a presentation to the servants of Immaculate Mary in reference to our fundraiser, the Ukrainian fundraiser we had, so if they wouldn't mind coming up here, if you don't mind stepping up, sisters. If the board would like to, I'd like to get us all in the picture if you don't mind. Just want to picture. Community, I've been out working with a lot of people this year, came together and we got in touch with this charity here, and we've heard nothing but fabulous things about this charity, and we'd like to present this donation from our community. It's $50,000, $6,000 cash and checks, okay? And it's everyone, the police department, the residents, the DPW, the recreation, the voter trustees, everyone. And if anyone can assist in something else you see out of a worthy cause, come here. Don't hesitate to call us, all right? You give that a push. Thank you.
Very nice. One, two, three.
Cheese, cheese. Four cheese, four, five, six.
Four, five, six. Ready, one, two, three.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the sisters in Ukraine and Poland, and us, the servants here in America, we want to thank each and every one for the whole community, for the great support, because this might be something, the things that we do here might be a liberty for them, but we can't be physically there to help them. But talking to the sisters and them sharing with us what are the things that they're doing, the people that they are encountering, how they are helping them, it breaks our hearts to see what the stories that they tell us. And they said, even like just to know, yeah, somebody is there thinking of them, doing little things that give the strength and the courage to all of them, as some of the soldiers sometimes they say, or people that are in front lines are finding, they say that they hear, they see, and they have that feeling that somebody is protecting them. And that is our prayers, our support, and you know, that's giving them strength and courage to continue. So on behalf of all the community of the sisters, especially those that are working with the refugees there in Ukraine and Poland, we thank from the bottom of our hearts the whole community, and remember that you'll be present in our prayer today, because we pray for our benefactors, and that is included each and every one of you and the whole community. So thank you so much. God bless you.
Okay, we're going to have a public hearing on April 4th in reference to the tentative budget, that'll be at 7:02 PM. And at 7:03, we'll have a public hearing on the water and sewer rates. We will let the community know as best we can. I'll put it out there myself, because we want the people to be involved, and we want them to know what's going on in our village. The attorneys, I let them off, because they've been working on a lot of land use things and whatnot, I didn't think it was necessary to have them. This is just a workshop, it's more of us, you know, getting and talking to each other. So what we're going to be doing on the meeting, we're going to grant a permit to the Chamber of Commerce to hold a Suffern Street Fair downtown on May 1, 2022, from 10 to 5:00 PM. We still have to get a contract between them to cover us on the insurance. And then we'll also, in our meeting, we'll grant a permit for Sacred Heart Church to hold a circus on Tagasti Monastery grounds on June 2, 2022, at 6:00 PM. And June 3, 2:22 at 5:00 PM, and 7:00 PM. And the chief of police, I know you're aware of this, and we know what has to be done as far as that, and we'll stay, they've been very good in communicating with us, and we'll stay in communication in whatever they need for us to assist them, and vice versa, and we'll make this a good event for our whole community. And then we'll have a resolution appointing Howard Cohen as a court attendant on call. We have two court officers right now, they have a certain amount in their budget, it's about 50, 200, so whether they have two or three on the rolls, it doesn't affect the taxpayers or anyone else, it just gives them more, to have more people, the availability for more people to work. We have the Jeremy Kaufman, chief, please, fire department, please.
Good evening, village board.
Good evening.
The first item for the board is the acceptance of a new member, Matthew Friedman, for the volunteer host company. He'll be an over-18 member. And then the second item is a resolution to extend coverage under the New York State Volunteer Fireman's Benefit Law for members participating in county teams, I guess you could say, the hazmat team or the technical rescue team. And that's all.
That's a, Jeremy, that's a standard thing that we usually, we keep our coverage in while they're assisting other things in the county as well as assisting our local residents, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Chief Lockman, please.
Good evening, everyone. In the month of March, so far in the month of March, the police departments responded to about 700 calls for service. Just a couple of things to update the board on, tomorrow we should be receiving our new body camera system, as well as our interview room system. The system will be set up and programmed, and we'll have to do training with all the officers, but we anticipate being able to get them live in the next couple of weeks. We've also received our Bola Wrap device, which, if the board remembers, was a less lethal device, excuse me, that we spoke about earlier. We've received our device, we're in the process of training officers on that, and we also anticipate that being rolled out in the next couple of weeks on patrol. The only item that I'll have for the board to take action on will be a request to declare an old fingerprint scanner as surplus, so we can either list it or dispose of it. The fingerprint scanner was part of our old live scan system, which we no longer use. We have a new system, which we've had for probably almost two years at this point, so the scanner is not used to us anymore.
Is it something that's still operational, that another police department could make use?
They may be able to, I think the plan is to list it on gov deals and see, you know, if it's something that we can sell, but you know, that'll be after the board declares it surplus.
Sure, of course.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, chief. I just want to, now, we'll probably do it at the regular meeting, I just want to, again, congratulate everybody on a great job, the fire department, the police department, the recreation, the DPW, on that parade. It was a credit to the village of Suffern on us showing a parade for all our surrounding community, as well as our residents. And still, we're still getting accolades, right? But it was, you know, it was a team effort, all right? And also, I want to thank the community for supporting it, and I want to thank the other board members for assisting me in anything and allowing us to do it. I had to stay in contact with them, and they were all cheering and right there with it also. So it's a credit to us as a village. And I think you've probably heard some good things out there, and we've got to keep on, we'll keep up those good things as a team to make it a better community. Fred, grant writer, please. And I hope you have a lot of grants for us.
Good evening. Basically, I just want to let you know that the CDBG application went in, $200,000 for parking lot A. As with when we do our personal tax forms, every year there's more forms and et cetera. With that application this year, there were a couple more forms, which involve the board, and which you had to answer, so I want to thank the mayor and the board for getting those forms back to me. And I'm happy to say that we actually submitted the application a week early.
Thank you.
Just two other items, two grants, the garbage truck grant for $200,000, and the all-terrain vehicle for the fire department, which is $50,000. We have now completed the grant dispersment agreements for those, so we can actually go out and purchase the vehicles. So we're on the down slope now, where we're actually going to be able to acquire any equipment, and it should be in the inventory, you know, as soon as it can possibly be. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You want to have Department of Culture and Recreation, Kathy, sorry, there.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry. So a few things that we have coming up, April 9, which is next Saturday, the village will be very busy. We have the Suffern Little League who is going to have their season opener, and the village board is invited to attend the opening ceremonies. We're going to line up here at Village Hall, have a little parade downtown, and then we're going to have the ceremony down at the ball fields. And then after that, we're going to come back up the fields, up the street, to the egg hunt, which will be at 11 o'clock at the gazebo. So we're all welcome, and we're looking forward to that. It's going to be outside, we're going to have everything outside this year. And then on the 30th, we have Keep Rockin' Beautiful. And as you know from the past, we've got a lot of, a lot of people that really show interest in helping the community, being part of it. We have our DPW guys that volunteer, they help us out, so everybody is invited to that event to help out. If there's a location that you would like to be cleaned up in the village, please reach out, we're always looking for opportunities to do something different on Keep Rockin' Beautiful Day. But it's from 9 to 12 on the 30th. And the other updates, I can update on Monday. I think that's it.
What time is Little League?
Little League, is it, we're going to line up at 9 o'clock here, and then 9:30 they plan on kicking off, and then going down to the fields.
Right now, Kathy's been down, I've been down there, Joe Hunt, Topper down there, we're working hard there to get things ready down there, so we can have a nice, good kickoff down there. They're planning on putting a new hood, a hood in the kitchen, so they can cook hot food, it's taking a little long because things are backordered, and hopefully, you know, get it looking nice, and we get some good things. They've actually, they talked, they actually raised your insurance, so it puts us, the village, in a better position. They were, they had a certain amount, but you know, as time goes on, you need a higher amount, so they were, they actually went ahead and did it on their own, they were very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Kathy?
Are we doing not just Battery Saturday, Saturday, that same day, right? Or April 30?
Well, it's actually, it's a question for Bruce, I don't know, Bruce, we haven't really talked about that.
I'm putting you on the spot.
I'm glad you brought that up, Frank. Bruce, what do you think?
Let me just say it's a good thing there are three nuns here, Frank. I would love to tell you when not just Battery Saturday is going to be, I would love to tell you it's going to be soon, we are still working that out, hopefully by next meeting, next Monday, I'll have a more definitive answer for you.
Sorry about that, I thought you had it booked there.
Say your prayers, Frank.
They'll protect you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Do Department of Public Works, I've been talking to Charles, I'm going to be talking more to the board members here, on doing what they call something called a consent agenda, okay? Purpose of a consent agenda is that a lot of times there are small items that we can talk in a workshop, and the public can see it, but if we can do it, come together on a consent agenda, then when we go to a regular board meeting, we can speed it up and then have more time to talk about, you know, other issues. I'm not talking about hiring personnel, but I'm talking about, let's say he has to pay $127 for this, or $36, and it's already, things are already in his budget, he's already budgeted for. I think we can speed up these meetings, and I think, I think it's better for the public, that way they, the people won't have to even watch them, because they're not so drawn out. No, that's just, that's something I'd like to, I'd like to do, and Mike DiNito is, you know, has been big on that, and I just, I just want to know what I'm thinking, we can talk more before the meeting, all right? It's our decision, not my decision. Charles?
Good evening.
Would you like that, Charles, a consent agenda?
Yes.
I guess, Charles.
All right, so the first two items are map case repayments, one for the backup power for critical facilities project, and one for the hardening of water treatment plant project. The next item would be to authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Pingarrett Deutsch for professional services in conjunction with the new water meter and data collection. That's an amount of $12,800. And then the next item is requesting authorization to award a bid for zinc orthophosphate to Coin Chemical in the amount of $13, or I should say $13.5728 dollars per gallon. And reject bids for liquid sodium hydroxide, and authorizing resolicitation of bids for liquid sodium hydrochloride solution and 25% sodium hydroxide.
Could I just interrupt one second, Charles?
Yeah.
Okay, what happened was, we had gotten three bids back for chemicals, chlorine and, and three chemicals that we used, you know, a fair amount. Probably because of COVID or whatever else, the prices were so, so high, we decided to accept the one bid, because they're really the only person that does it, and the county actually prefers that you go that way with it. The other two bid was so high, we actually went and looked at things like bid net and other ways to find, make it a wider bid, huh? So we were taking a shot at sending the bid back out to try to save the taxpayers money. Now, on that one chemical that we are taking a bid for, we realize that what we can do is order a little extra before the end of the year, so we're getting at the old price contract versus the new price contract, all right? So that's, I'm sorry, Charles, all right?
Right, that's right, exactly right. Okay, next item would be requesting that I attend the 2022 New York State Flood, Plains, Storm Wated Managers Association Annual Conference in Schenectady on May 3 through the 5. Next item is declaration, various vehicles and equipment owned by the village of Suffern will no longer be needed for municipal purposes and to be surplus. Next item would be setting a public hearing for, on May 20, I'm sorry, May 2, 2022, at 7:02. The purpose of, to accept the annual New York State DEC MS4 report. Next item is authorizing the award of the Galleon Stainless Steel Dump Body Bid to Trius in the amount of $44,500. And there's one item that didn't quite make the agenda, but it's, we had some discussion with the mayor, working on Lot B, on looking at the best approach to get that project done in a cost-effective way. So currently reviewing the possibility of piggybacking off the town of Clarkstown roadway resurfacing program bid. As you know, the price of oil has gotten kind of crazy over the last few weeks. Ash fall is based on the price of oil, so we're looking at, and I should have some answers within the next day or so, on how we, you know, my recommendation, how we should approach that. All right, is there any questions?
Yeah, I just want to, on Lot B, okay, there's actually a double, double project here. One is, we have a lot of, we have to do a bid for drainage work, a lot of drainage underneath there, I don't know if you watch with the water, then I'll probably prevent it from being destroyed so quickly. And the second one is the paving. We originally thought the DPW, and they could do it, but it became more of an extensive project. So we have two grants, right, Fred, that are sitting there, okay? So I think it's about 170 worth of grants?
170,000.
170,000, right. So we have two grants sitting there, but there's other money that will be put in there too, that's been set aside for that also, is that correct, Mr. DiNito?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's other money there, so we're going to, we'll work on that, and we'll get the bids, and we'll go from there, okay? So I just have to, I just have to do the one motion now for the, to accept the one bid on the chemicals?
Yes.
And to, and to turn down a bid on the other two chemicals. So can I have, in reference to a resolution awarding a bid for zinc orthophosphate to Coin Chemical, and rejecting the bids for liquid sodium hydrochloride solution and 25% sodium hydroxide, and authorizing the resolicitation of bids for liquid sodium hydrochloride solution and 25% sodium hydrochloride? Can I please have a motion, please?
Motion, trustee Hagan.
Motion made by trustee Hagan, seconded by trustee Albert.
I was about to.
At the same time.
I was about to, but I think you weren't. Give it to, give it to trustee Corrigan.
And seconded by trustee Corrigan. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed. Charles, we're going to put those chemicals on every month, so you can read it every month.
I think you have the hardest words.
Just like I had a pleasure reading them, okay?
Charles, you get the hardest words to say.
We put out a contest to see who can say them 10 times fast.
Tell them about the, go ahead, we have one more, the tank. You did the tank, right, Charles?
Yeah.
Yeah, but just tell them about the tank, I want them to understand what that is. We got a bid back on that for, I think it was 44,000?
Oh, the, the...
Tell them what the purpose of that tank is.
That's the stainless steel dump body, yes. So historically, and currently as well, in the wastewater treatment plant, there's two screw presses, oops, two screw presses that essentially de-water the sludge, it gets into a cake form, goes into an orange dump truck. And many times overnight, it would have, it would sit there, half full, and then the next time they ran the press, they'd fill it and then bring it over to Hillburn. So there's a very corrosive environment in that building, although we do have an HVA system that does provide six air changes, but just being that close proximity to the sludge, it causes a lot of damage to electronics and other mechanical parts of that truck. So we, over the years, we've spent quite a bit of money making repairs, and that truck's getting older now, it's even diverted, we can get parts. So this would, we would use our, most recent, within the last couple of years, we acquired a lift-and-go truck, so that would give us the capability of leaving that container, we wouldn't have the dump truck in there anymore, just leaving the container in that building, filling it with sludge, when it's full, then we can use our lift-and-go truck, pick up the container, and take it to Hillburn, Hillburn, bring it back, empty, drop it off, and just leave the container again, so that's the concept.
Fedders say it's a little more modern that way, Charles?
Yeah, it's something we've been talking about, and yeah, it's a much better approach, yeah.
Thank you, Charles, very much.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DiNito, please.
Yes, mayor, we only have one item on the agenda, and that is for vital statistics software for the village clerk's office. Essentially, we're talking about birth and death certificates that are processed. The clerk's office currently processes them with typewriters, very slow and inefficient, obviously. The clerk and I did some research across the state, checking with various municipalities, especially those that had a hospital in them, where they processed a lot of birth certificates and death certificates. For example, we have Good Samaritan Hospital, and since that's within our village, we process the majority of births and death certificates on this side of Rockland County. And that amounts to about 4,000 a year. So they've been doing those on typewriters up to now. There is software out there, it's approximately $13,000 to get that software, and in the research that we did, that one name of software kept coming up across the state, and actually in Long Island, a very large hospital that processes, or municipality that processes 14,000 a year, uses that software. So we're recommending that the, there will be a resolution to use up to $13,000 of the ARPA money that we received in order to purchase the software. That'll include the training for the clerk's office, the installation of the software, and the support for the first year.
Very good, Mike, thank you. I think that's a great modernization way for the village, I think it was a necessary, and I think it'll make the clerk's office more efficient over time. I guess, trustees, please?
I already said my piece.
You did. You already got the cameraman upset, Frank. Okay, you almost walked out.
I had a couple of things I wanted to inquire about, actually, Charles might be able to address them. Will there be a list coming soon of streets that will be worked on this year as the next phase of road improvements? Because a lot of, I was, you know, walking around the village, obviously, and a lot of people asked me about whether their street would be worked on, and I actually had to say, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we don't have a complete list, we have essentially a tentative list, some of, kind of a carryover from last year, we're unable to get to. But certainly if the mayor and the board have any recommendations, we'll certainly take that.
And I know I've had a lot of complaints about Park Avenue, particularly, but I don't know if that Orange and Rockland work has been...
Yeah, so the area, we just received a permit request, Mayor Ford, mayor was in a meeting with O and R, Orange, Rockland, a couple of weeks ago. So their first, their first phase of work is on Cypress and Forest, and that's the one that they've currently applied for a permit for. The next is a much broader phase, and that does include Park and many of the other areas in that vicinity. So that, they've indicated that would be done this year, I would suspect it probably more like the fall or so, but yeah, we don't want to pave and then have them rip it up.
Right. Now, one of the other streets you actually mentioned, I was going to bring up the next street, I had a particular complaint, someone on Cypress Road said that the other side of Cypress Road, closer to the school, had been done numerous times, but the side between the school and Sylvan Way had not been done, apparently, in quite a while.
So what happened last year, we had that scheduled to be completed, that's one section you just spoke of. However, we were approached by Orange and Rockland that they wanted to do a gas main replacement in that section.
Yeah.
So we removed it from last year's phase.
But then they didn't do the work.
It's in this year's phase. We're actually be looking, well, I take that back, because they have to complete the gas work first, so once they complete the gas work, then we'll, we'll be able to take a look at when we can actually get that done. But again, we'd be looking at trying to get a cost-sharing agreement with O and R for these areas.
Sure.
So that we could, you know, they pay for a portion, and we pay for a portion of payment.
And the one, the one other that was brought up while I was walking around was in that same area you also mentioned, Forest. The complainer said that there was an issue with the berm along the side is missing in several spots.
Yeah, what happens here, this ash fall, it's, you know, when they pave the road, they construct that, over time, it plows, the tendency of...
I know some streets have curbs instead of berms, is there a preference one way or the other? Because the people with the, the people were complaining that there was drainage issues when there's an opening in the berm, because the water sloshes into their property.
You saying, you talking about concrete curbing?
I'm just inquiring, you know, is there...
Yeah, well, it's, it's kind of the alternative to, you know, you have Belgian block curbing, you got concrete curbing, and then the alternative is to do what we call a raised edge berm, you can call it berm, but it's a raised edge, it just kind of re, it helps directing the water.
Yeah.
But it does... But it does, it is an issue over time where plows and then traffic, you know, we're looking at a number of years and it gets, and then it gets beat up.
Right, is there?
You know, we do at times identify those areas and go back and repair them.
Yeah.
But, you know, we haven't done all of them, obviously.
Okay, thank you. I also had one or two other quick things. That's okay. I had some questions from some residents. Whether, basically, there was some residents in a certain neighborhood concerned about a lot of long-term rentals of homes in their neighborhood. And they asked me if there's any regulations that pertain to that. And I figured I'd inquire at the meeting.
Okay, you would say long-term renter?
Well, like people who buy a house and then don't live there. Instead, they rent the house to someone else.
That's actually 100% legal in Suffering. But what I have, and I'll talk when I, I guess I'll interject in that now. And you've heard me talk about it, how people are buying houses and getting more rents than they should.
Yeah.
And I actually talked to the, just recently now, finding out from the treasurer, and I've talked to actually the building department today. I think this board needs to hire another code enforcer slash fire inspector. I will also point out that this village has never, ever inspected Bonheur, Stone Gate in the general areas. That's not, we're not doing them any credit by not doing that. I think we need to start inspecting Bonheur and Stone Gate, not their individual, their individual places. They would give affidavits for that, but we need this. Their common areas have to be inspected. We have responsibility to the people that don't know about it. So that's an issue that I'd like to put on again. We were, I actually was with the building department today discussing these factors. And I think the, I actually now, I get all the complaints sent to me because I realize it is, it is, it's a serious problem in this village with that. And that is one of my big concerns, and as you know, I've talked about it. So we actually hit a violation, we've been hitting violations, things that existed in reference to, I can give you Yorkshire Drive a red today. I give it, I'm not going to hit addresses. I can hit you on Wayne Avenue, illegal apartments on third floors, that they just went ahead against every fire safety rule there is. And I'm not going to stand for it. I'm not going to stand for it. I'd rather not be mayor and do it right than keep doing this. And I, I never, and I won't, will never tell not anyone in this village not to do their job on safety. And I'm in that building department just about every day. And they know my opinion up there. And I, that, I think we definitely have to hire another, you know, I call fire inspectors class slash code enforcer. I'd rather them have the ability to do both. Because if they do both, and I need them here in the daytime. I need them here. We have two at night. I don't, I'm not a total fan of that. I think we made a mistake in this village not having one working in the daytime so they can go out. So that's another issue we'll talk about. But put that aside, we definitely need one in the daytime to help do these other inspections. We are way behind in inspections in this village, huh? On fire inspections, way behind. And it even affects, it affects our budget. But I don't care about our budget. I care about the safety of the residents. And I'm on that, and then we'll be, we'll be working on that very, very quickly. I guess I'll leave that at that.
I have one or two other things. I apologize.
No, that's all right.
I was doing a lot of walking around the village and talking to people over the last few weeks. It's that season, if y'all know what I mean. And another question that came up was, we currently contract with companies, for instance, Marangi handles the garbage collection of Stone Gate and Bonheur, I believe. I'm not sure. I don't remember who handles the Knowles. But this person was at the Knowles, and they said instead of having to contract with an external company, as it were, they wanted to know what would be involved for the village to obtain the correct equipment to pick up garbage at the Knowles, just as an alternative to that.
Just off the top of my head, you would need, you would need more garbage trucks.
Sure.
You would probably need more employees. You would, I mean, I think there'd be a lot more assets. I think, I think they actually did a study on this years ago in a prior administration, and they came back and says it was not, it wasn't.
Wasn't cost effective.
I don't know if it was, you remember that, Frank?
It wasn't cost.
It wasn't cost, I think Frank was on that board.
The residents seemed to feel, you know, they were like saying it would be good to have the numbers to make that decision.
Yeah, well, we, listen, I have no problem looking at the numbers, okay? But you'd probably put a bigger tax burden on the rest of the community.
Right.
So if you did that. Mike, you have something to say?
Mayor, back in the 1980s, when I was the treasurer here back then.
Yes.
That's when they started picking up Stone Gate and Bonheur. Now, the village did not have the equipment to do that because they have specialized equipment for dumpsters in Bonheur and Stone Gate. However, they made an arrangement to go out on behalf of Bonheur and Stone Gate and do the bidding for that work. So the village would do the bidding for that work, which is what they do. And then a contract is formed between the village and the partner. And then the village bills the units per unit charge based on that contract. That's what we currently do. We call it the container district.
Yes.
I don't know of all of the legal ramifications about picking up in another area or why they, maybe Bonheur and Stone Gate were the only two places at the time that had condos at that point. But in any event, that would be something for attorneys to take a look at, our village attorney to take a look at and to make a recommendation. But either way, if we were to do it, we would do it financially very similar. So it wouldn't have a tax impact on the individual taxpayers. But what will happen is a taxpayer in Bonheur, for instance, gets a tax bill with a charge for the garbage on it. And so people that are now living in another area, for instance, that didn't have that, would see an additional charge on their tax bill. You just have to understand that that's something they used to pay for, maybe through common charges or something.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. The last question I have, I know a few months ago, the board approved a solar, a community solar project of some sort. And I just wanted to find out what the, the aggregation. I'm just trying to find out where that sits right now.
Do you mean real term?
Yes.
Real, we're talking with real term now. Am I getting the point? We just, we're actually, we're actually in with the now.
What you're referring to is the community choice aggregate?
Yes.
Okay, that's real term. So that's something, I believe we had been in contact with the woman that came here to make a presentation on this.
Yes.
I'm not quite sure if she had gone back to you, Mayor, on.
Well, the one, if the one I'm thinking about, she had gotten back to it. But under that program, if I have the right one you're talking about, they, everyone in the village, they automatically made everyone in the village do it, and you had to opt out. And I was afraid of elderly people and many other people that wouldn't know how to do it. So we were forcing them. There are other people that have what they call ESCOs. ESCOs are private energy companies that you get on your bill that you can personally choose. Those people that picked their private ESCOs would now be kicked off that choice and put on this. I didn't, I talked to other supervisors in this county, and they, probably they didn't go with it, and someone that did go with it. And they were not as happy as I thought they would be. The initial thought is that you're getting, you know, a great discount, and you may, and you may not. But now I'm putting government in control in their choices. I didn't feel it was a good choice. Because you were forcing, this whole community would have been pushed into that. And I didn't feel I had the right to push this whole community into that. That's how, and I didn't, I didn't, you know, as I talked about her plan, I said, would you, I said to her, would you do the program where the people can choose to opt in? I said, you give us that option, and we would definitely consider doing it. She would not give me that option about opting in. And that's where that stood on that.
All right, thank you.
They good, Frank? They good?
Okay, thanks.
All right. Anyone else, trustees, we're good? I went and took Joe, put some Cub Scouts here today. It was nice. We gave them a tour, the tour of the building, the Cub Scouts and their den leader and some parents. And it was a, it was a nice tour. I pray I had the most fun out of everybody.
They're probably still downstairs in the police department, aren't they?
They got to see the police department, okay? I didn't go into jail because I didn't think they would let me out. So I didn't go down to the police department. So, okay. So, Mayor, okay, trustees are done. So approval of March 7, 2022 Board of Trustees meeting. We'll vote on that next meeting. And then I guess I just want to point out, and then I, Steve was probably going to do it next meeting, but the chief and his members are doing, back to doing their dance again, all right? And then we're real excited about that. There'll be no hula hoops. That's for me. That's my thing. Don't be trailing my trick, all right? So, but it's great the chief is, you got a couple of dates already planned. I'm sure you'll announce the next thing. And, you know, get these kids going there, having a good time again. We're, get back to regular America, as they say. Also, I guess when you're talking about the paving of the streets, there are, Orange and Rockland is doing a lot of different work. So what they do is they come back then, and then they compensate us. But we got to like negotiate with them, you know, Charles and even Joe Hunt's there to give us a fair share for the damage they did to our streets. So there were streets that aren't being paved right now because of that. But Charles, what we'll do, you know, maybe not this meeting before the next meeting, we'll come out with the whole plan, show everybody what's in the works, all right? What will be done, okay? And there will be a lot of patching. Joe's been going around with his men there, and Charles has been, you know, they've been figuring out streets, and we've been going around patching. We're probably even in parking lot B have to do some patching for now until we get the big thing, and down by the ball field. So it's like every day they're out there doing something, you know? There's no, there's no sitting around, I can tell you that. And I think that's it for myself there. So I don't know of any executive session, if anyone has an executive session they'd like to go into? Nothing there? Okay, I guess I take a motion to close the meeting?
Motion, trustee Corrigan.
Motion made by trustee Corrigan.
Second, trustee Alpert.
Second by trustee Alpert. All in favor?
Aye.
Will oppose? Thank you.